All right, welcome everyone. This is our human resources meeting. It is May 18th, 2023. The time is 10:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order in attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Duncan, and Matari. And any changes to the agenda? Okay. Item one, Hayden Ramsey Road right-of-way purchase. This is with the airport, so this is not actually HR-related, but we had to get this. It's time-sensitive, and so the city of Hayden's been working with the airport and now the Commissioners for well over a year, maybe a year and a half now. So what this has to do with is extending Ramsey Road around the east side of the airport. And so there was some airport property that they wanted to purchase so they could go ahead and construct that road, and their funding is going to start construction next year. So it's important to get this right-of-way fixed. So any questions, thoughts, any issues?
The only thing that it looks like to me is that this was already agreed to by the previous board, and that this is, all the proper parties have looked at it, said it's good, and now we're just executing it today.
Yeah, the FAA and everybody's signed off on it, so legal has looked through it, and we will go ahead and ratify this on Tuesday as well, just to make sure it gets in the proper BOCC channels, so, since it's not in its proper channel.
So would you like a motion?
I would.
Okay. I need that we approve the Hayden Ramsey Road right-of-way purchase at the airport.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, item two, recruitment discussion with the sheriff's office, and I think, Under Sheriff, are you leading us through this?
That's correct. Commissioner, Under Sheriff Brett Nelson for the sheriff's office. Back on the April 25th, we came before you, the sheriff and I, to discuss patrol staffing in our overtime. During that point, we reiterated the fact that we had 12 current openings, or approximately 36% of our patrol was vacant. We spoke of the disparity in pay with respect to Coeur d'Alene Police Department. If you recall, there was an 11% disparity at year one, and 22% at year six, which is approximately $22,000. Last year this time, Coeur d'Alene Police Department had over 10 vacancies. Now they have none. And speaking with their command staff, they directly related the ability to fill those vacancies to their new contract and the competitive salary, which was included. Last year at the same time, we had three, and again, we currently have 12 on patrol. I also explained in that previous meeting that a deputy at the current wage and salary is able to qualify for a $300,000 mortgage, wherein the median price is approximately 515 now in the county. At the end of the presentation, I was asked, in regards to our recruiting efforts, specifically how many applications we received, and in turn, how many we hired from that pool, and a financial, potential financial impact. In doing some analysis during the year of 2022, we garnered only 258 applications for our patrol vacancies. 194 of those applications were received for entry level, and another 64 applications were received for lateral positions. Of those 258 applications in total, we were only able to hire 10 new employees. A cost analysis was asked for and completed to depict the average expense to hire and train a patrol deputy. And if you refer to the packet that I've provided you, it's this form right here.
Hold on one second. I want to make sure that we're not going to violate any, you know, codes here, capacity issues. So how do you want to handle this, Under Sheriff?
What is the capacity of the room?
75.
Can I get someone to take a head count, see how many people we have in here for me? Eric, can you mind?
Under Sheriff, we don't have 75 people here.
Okay. And I'll just make an announcement. Commissioner Matari has to leave at 11 o'clock, so this meeting will not go beyond 10:55.
We have 49 total people in the room, Commissioner. In continuing the formula, which was titled "Average Expense to Hire and Train a Patrol Deputy", the analysis is broken down into three parts, that consist of pre-employment, uniform and equipment, and training expenses. And that totality at the bottom there is to get a deputy to a one-year certification point off of probation certified within the state. The total expense is approximately $132,300. The pre-employment expenses in total are approximately $2,955, and that includes PEP evaluation, background, credit check, psychological evaluation, medical examination, excuse me, and the average personnel expenses devoted to conduct those resources to complete the background.
I have a question about that.
Yes, Commissioner?
Is that for one deputy, or is that for, out of the 258 applicants whittled down, like the people, that's how much you spend for all the applicants until they go to the next level?
For one potential applicant.
Okay, so we actually spend that $2,955, 258 or 258 times for each application?
No.
Okay.
That is, that's just for the pre-employment expenses, to get them to a person that is going to be completed the background, if you will. At different facets, you may have someone, you know, disqualified for a credit check, a psychological evaluation, and medical, so those expenditures will vary.
Okay.
Of the 194 entry-level applicants, over 30% failed to show up for the written exam.
I'm sorry, are we done with this? Because I have questions.
I'll go back to it.
Okay, thank you.
So of the 194 level applicants, over 30% failed to show for the written exam. Another 11% failed our background. Of the 64 lateral applicants, 28% withdrew from the hiring process, and another 15% failed the background process. An estimated financial impact for 2022, depending, based on where these people fell out of the background process and that pre-employment expense, or I'm sorry, pre-employment process, is approximately $100,000 we expended in assets trying to get those people through the process up until the point where they're hired. Based on that, and the totality of the expenses devoted to not only try to process new applicants, but attract, it goes back to what the sheriff has been championing from day one, is having a competitive salary within our immediate area, to stay, one, competitive and comparative, two, those agencies around us, so that in turn, we can not only continue to retain the people that we have, but also attract new hires and new employees that can assist in fulfilling our ability to carry out our duties amongst the county. Commissioner, you said you had questions in regards to this expense?
Yeah, the $3,900 in uniform and equipment expenses, if they leave, then we recover most of that?
If a person is hired and they've been issued all of that equipment, that is true. That will be retained.
Okay. And then jumpsuit allowance, $600? I thought that was 250 per?
We are purchasing their first jumpsuit now, because we've gone away from, and since I became part of the administration, we went away from issuing several Class A uniforms and things of that nature. We go to one Class A uniform, in addition to purchasing that first jumpsuit, because that is their daily issued uniform of the day.
Okay. Then on the training portion of it, it talks about average wage of FTO, or the average FTO, there's two line items here. So average wage during FTO, I assume that that's the candidate, and then average FTO wage is their actual, their trainer?
One is being trained, one is the training, actual training of the training, by the training officer. The other one is the loss of production, if you will, by the training officer while training. Because that full-fledged deputy in the field is not producing or handling calls for service under normal capacity, because he's training someone up to get to that point.
Okay, but the $61,000, I mean, that person would be working anyway.
That is correct, but they're not handling calls for service in the same manner as they would if they were on their own. So that's why it was generated at 50% of those hours, because if they're training, they're not necessarily handling calls for service as a self-filling, I'm sorry, producing deputy.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
This is not a cowtown of 40,000 people anymore. We have serious events going on frequently, and we're assisting police departments that have serious events happening frequently. And this idea that the Cootney County Sheriff's Office continue to be a training department, and that mindset has to stop. We can pick these numbers, we can pick this and pick that, and pick this and pick that. But the bottom line is, we need to pay all of our people a competitive salary to other agencies in the Pacific Northwest. In what we've seen in the last two years, people are being offered money, more money, to stay at home. But these types of jobs that we have on the sheriff's office, some of them are time-sensitive, some of them are public safety as it pertains to the jail or patrol, we can't do that from home. So we, it makes that employee even more valuable than in 2019. So I'm just, we just have to stop this? This is not a cowtown of 40,000 people anymore?
All right, so this is the recruitment discussion, and I still have a bunch of slides here in front of me, so.
We need to pay our, we need to appreciate our people, and we need to pay them competitively so they can provide for their families.
And when you say competitively?
Yes.
You mean at the top of the scale?
No, absolutely not.
Why not?
I, well, I'd like that to be, however, generally, generally my experience with counties, we generally don't pay like cities do, but we're pretty darn close.
You don't need to.
We're not $20,000 difference in five years.
But you don't see that as the reason that we're having trouble attracting people, or getting them through background?
Well, you know what? I got to tell you, the Coeur d'Alene Police Department got several of them through, and they're at full staff right now, and they offered a $10,000 hiring bonus, so.
Do they, are their standards less than ours?
No. No, they're the same. But, you know, $10,000 and $20,000 after five years, that's a pretty significant pay difference.
Is their date to hire to finish background, or to start the job the same as ours?
We don't put timelines on those things. I mean, we'd like to get them as quickly as possible, but, you know, sometimes there's events that occur in a person's life, and we have to extend certain things, but.
Right, but I mean, the processes.
A process that we have is quite exponential in regards to other agencies, not only in the immediate area, but overall. Our backgrounds division is quite proficient in what they're doing and the way in which they're doing it. There's been a total evaluative process internally done on how things are conducted and the means in which they're done, so that we can in turn keep the attracted employees in the process and still attracted, so we're not drawing them out over a long period of time, where we may lose them to someone else.
Sure. What is the date from application to hire days?
Three months, roughly?
It's very subjective. From backgrounds, once they enter into background, it's about six to eight weeks on the long term.
Okay, six to eight weeks.
And Commissioner, if I may, the packet that you were given are just graphs in regards to the, an overview and further breakdown of the information that was depicted in the narrative portions of how and where people are falling out, where we're losing people as a whole. I spoke to some bullet points in regards to that, the large numbers, if you will.
A lot of your vacancies right now, though, are not necessarily due to people choosing to leave. Is that correct?
Can you clarify that?
You've had some involuntary dismissals, like?
Sure. Yeah, any organization of our size will endure some of those, yes.
And in our defense, we've inherited some issues that has been addressed as of late. So as the sheriff spoke to, yes, with an organization as large, we're going to have internal, if you will, dirty laundry, and we have to attend to that on a regular basis. But yes, we do have openings because of those.
Sure. All right, so is that it on the recruiting?
Again, that's who I just came back for and answered some questions that were presented to me as a whole.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Yeah, so basically, right now, what it is, is for every 25 applicants, you get one deputy. How many vacancies do you have right now in patrol?
12.
12.
Eleven and a half.
So you're going to need to get another 250, 300 applicants to replace those.
Correct.
But you're only getting that many applicants in a year? And what's your attrition each year? Out of patrol, how many people tend to leave?
I'm not certain of that.
No, I have overall, in all regards, the sheriff's office, but we could get that from the boost.
Yeah, because you see, what we need to figure out is, are we going to make any headway with your 250 applicants every year? Are you just, are you replacing the people that are leaving, or are you not even replacing quick enough the people that are leaving? The only other issue that I see, and I've seen this in business a lot, is that there's nothing worse than giving somebody responsibility without authority. And what happens, the way I see the structure here in the county, is that our elected officials have the responsibility, but the board has the authority on what the pay is and all those other things. And so when we have a vacancy rate that's big, it's everyone's problem. It's not the sheriff's problem, it's our problem too, because the community suffers, and we should be looking at ways to try to solve that problem. And if there is a big discrepancy between other agencies close by, that's something that we have to look at closely, I think, because this problem is something that we can't just say, it's the sheriff's fault, or it's the sheriff's problem because he has the responsibility, yet we have the authority to actually manifest some change. And so I'd like to see these numbers broken down a little bit differently, because what's happening is, is I'd like to know, out of those 258 applicants, you spent $2,955 on a fair number of them, but not all of them became deputies. And so that cost needs to be loaded into the deputy that you hire. And you spent $3,900 on uniforms and other stuff, but some of those got returned, and some of them, you know, that you had to spend, and some of that money was lost on applicants who never became deputies. And so all the applicants that we spent money on that never became deputies has to be loaded onto the cost of getting one deputy. And then when we can look at that, and look at the rate that we're losing the deputies each year, we can ask, we can answer these questions, are we ever going to get caught up based upon this ratio? Because the only two ways that I see that we're going to fill this, get caught up, is we either lower our standards, or we increase our pay to get more applicants, because it's an applicant problem. It's, we're going to have normal turnover no matter what, is the way I see it. And I've seen this with other organizations, so there's nothing unusual here.
And on that point, Blaine County in Idaho, and Ada County in Idaho are the highest paid, and they have zero vacancies, and they are considered destination organizations. So we want to be that destination organization here in the Pacific Northwest.
Well, I understand.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have two executive sessions now. What I would do, because it looks like we're doing all right on time, I would be willing to take three at two minutes each, if there was anybody prepared to speak for public comment. And then if there's more after our two executive sessions, possibly to do that. Nick?
Press that button up there, whatever table.
Wherever you want.
Yeah, table's fine.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'm going to try to keep this short, because obviously, there's other people who want to speak. My name's Nick Ferentz, and I'm the president of the FOP Lodge 43, which is also known as our association. And I thank you for the opportunity. Recruitment and retention are actually hand-in-hand, and that's some of what I think may be getting a little lost here for our people. We have great people, and we need to keep them. We also have openings, and we'll have attrition due to any number of reasons, most of them are retirement, that we have to backfill. And as we continue to grow, we have to attract more people. We have an expectation that we're going to bring the best of the best in, but we have to make it attractive for them to want to work at the sheriff's office. I have been on the recruiting team for many years. I, this is my 17th year with the organization, and we have made strides in internal organization opportunities to make people feel welcome and at home. It's almost embarrassing, but I end up with FaceTime with almost all of our new hires, and looking around the room, I'm pretty sure most people would say that when they were newly hired, whether I'm teaching them on the range, or they're in my car for a ride-along. And I tell people, minute one, guys, I can't sell you on the pay, I can sell you on the lifestyle. We are blessed to serve this community, and we do it proudly, and truly know how lucky we are. But it's getting to a point where how can, how can I take a husband or a wife with a family and look at them and say, you're going to take a $20,000, $30,000 hit from what you could be making in the same community, working for the sheriff's office? I can't attract people, because I won't lie to them. I can say, well, this might be what you make, but they also hear the grumblings where we have people that are three years behind in a pay matrix, that they've never been made whole on. Everybody in this community and in this country right now is experiencing difficult financial times. But we also understand the business side of things, where we have to be competitive within our job market. And we're not. I don't believe, everybody here wants to make more money, Commissioners included, I'm sure, but nobody here expects to make top of market. But we need to be close, so those people who can look at the benefits that we offer, the sense of family and camaraderie that we bring, where they can say, you know what, I can make some concessions, and we're going to be buying some generic brand stuff, and we're going to go on vacation every third year instead of every other year, every year, to get the lifestyle that the sheriff's office offers. But I still have kids with medical needs, braces, I still have a house payment to make. We literally have deputies who are tenured on their own, barely making ends meet, living in a single-bedroom, 600-square-foot studio apartment. I know the financial burden of taxes and all those things on other people. I truly am not insensitive to it. I'm a small business owner as well. But I don't know that there's anybody in your constituency who would say, you know what, those deputies, they make too much money. I don't want to see them make a livable wage in a community and raise their families here to have that sense of ownership. Unfortunately, the sheriff doesn't get to set our pay rates or raises, but has made inroads in trying to develop a culture and supporting us through policy changes and trying to make it the best place that he can. Unfortunately, it's up to the Commissioners and the taxpayers to get us to a point where we.
You're at four minutes now.
I apologize.
That's okay. I do have a couple of questions, so.
Sure.
The onsite clinic that we're going to open up for employees, do you consider that a benefit? The medical clinic?
Potentially, a limited benefit, sure.
Limited in which way?
Well, it's going to depend on hours operations, it's going to depend on location. If you live in Athol, Idaho, it's probably a commute, and then trying to make time for that and make that work might be difficult. Or if you live in Plum, or Worley, or Harrison, that's difficult. It is a benefit, but it's limited.
Okay. That's, are you on duty right now?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Harvey Bowman. I served this community and this county as a patrol deputy for KCSO for nearly 12 years. Currently signed as a patrol K-9 handler. I also serve on our SWAT team and as an instructor in our firearms training unit. I serve as district deputy, school resource officer, background investigator and detective, investigating everything from murder to low-level property crimes. I'm a trainer in multiple disciplines as well at the sheriff's office. During my time at the SO, I've seen almost a constant revolving door of people getting hired and trained, only to leave for more money and better benefits in neighboring jurisdictions. I've put countless hours of training and effort into these men and women. I've watched as fresh recruits turn into seasoned deputies, who brought value to this organization, and I've watched good men and women with incredible amounts of knowledge and experience start at KCSO, only to leave because they got paid significantly higher only minutes away. In my career, I've never seen staffing numbers as low as they currently are. For the past year, nearly every shift I've worked is at or below minimum manning. At minimum staffing, we don't have enough deputies to effectively and safely engage in proactive policing or provide the level of law enforcement service our community rightfully expects. As a result, we can expect to see a dramatic increase in crime throughout the county, I believe this. Due to the constant minimum staffing, we're not able to provide our deputies with the level of in-service training that we used to. Many deputies, including myself, have been forced to skip vital training due to the fact that we don't have enough people to work the street. Matter of fact, today is a SWAT training day, and I am not authorized to attend because of the fact that we don't have enough people to staff my shift. So rather than debriefing our last call-out this week and training hostage rescue, which is what the last call-out was, I, I'm unauthorized to work.
You're at your limit, but I do have a couple of questions. Are there any good reasons to work for KCSO? Because anybody watching this who might have wanted to apply is going to say, well, they don't have benefits, they're overworked and underpaid, so why would I apply there?
There are many, many, many good reasons to work here. I would argue that this is arguably the best agency to work for in the region. However, we can't recruit, and we can't retain simply because we don't get paid enough, and I've watched it for over a decade. And I've watched good men and good women, who were solid deputies, leave to go to Coeur d'Alene PD, Liberty Lake, Spokane County, and Spokane PD, and it's constant, it's non-stop. It's a wonderful place to work, and I'm proud to work here. And up until a few years ago, I didn't really have a problem with the pay. I grew up here. However, this is not the community that it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're getting really close to time, so if someone's willing to just stick to two minutes, I can take one more, and then we'll go into executive session.
I'll stick to two minutes, babe. And if you will, please tell me at two minutes, and I'll stop talking, okay? My name's Eric Brock. I'm employed with the sheriff's office here at Cootney County. I've been here going on nine years, getting paid a seven-year deputy salary based on the matrix that was frozen twice in my career by the Board of County Commissioners. That's not why I'm talking today. I'm currently a SWAT officer, an FTO, previous K-9 handler. I wear a lot of hats at this agency. I was on the recruitment team. I currently am an FTO on graveyard shift. Graveyard shift, it should be known, we do run at minimums, if not below. For example, the entire Cootney County, at graveyard's times, we have been patrolling with three deputies and a watch commander. So to paint a picture, I'm a very visual person, is if a call comes out, domestic violence situation in Harrison, that's a minimum two officer response, leaving one officer and one watch commander for the entire community. Now, what happens when something else comes out in Athol, Idaho, another domestic? That leaves and jeopardizes the rest of the community and the safety that we have. That leaves and jeopardizes the rest of the community and the safety that we have based on the fact that we do not have ample staffing. Ample staffing comes in with the attraction of being competitive. We're not attracting anybody, rather than the numbers you said today, 250 is what I heard, for a year of applicants. I think that number's going to increase highly if we remain competitive and we can be close to our competitors, i.e. Spokane, Ada County, Coeur d'Alene, within like a 5% or whatever it may be. But we have to remain competitive to attract more people from the community, to amplify and provide the safety the community deserves. Because I don't want to go home one day and have a buddy of mine get injured on duty because of the fact that we don't have staffing on the street, because we're below minimums, due to the fact that we are not competitive, due to the fact we're not attracting the people to come and want to work for Cootenay County.
Are you willing to go out to the community and pitch why it's such a great organization?
Ma'am, I pitch that every single day, but when people ask me why there's only three or four deputies on, I let them know. I'm very honest with people, very transparent. For the record, I am not on duty. I'm here in my own time. I do reside an hour and a half, hour and 15, 20 minutes away. But I do speak highly of this place. I moved here from Las Vegas, Nevada, spent time overseas in the Army. I'm a combat wounded veteran. And this is heaven on earth. This is God's country. God bless USA. When people come here, they don't want to break the law because this is Idaho, we enforce our laws. So yeah, this is a heck of a place to work, but it's hard to keep that attraction of people with the lack of competitive that we have due to the key here is money.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time very much.
Thank you.
I want to ask the sheriff or undersheriff, do we have a person or persons who are tasked with recruitment only?
No, that's not their only job. They have, that's a collateral, that's a collateral for them.
I understand, but why don't we?
I would like to have that conversation with you.
Well?
Right now, we're also down in some of the other areas of our agency. So, but would I like to have dedicated recruitment people? Absolutely, and a dedicated team, sure.
I mean, it's a quasi-military organization.
It is.
And a lot of our people come from the military. And we all know that our recruiters were recruiters. They weren't clerks and recruiters or vehicle maintenance and recruiters.
We have agencies that go to, we have agencies that go to Camp Pendleton. We have agencies that go to army bases throughout the region.
I just think that's something that can't be ignored. You need to spend the money to get them out there, to bring the people in.
Well, I think we had something before the board where the sheriff's office was going to advertise on TV. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I would ask Zach Newkirk to come up and give you some information related to that.
Have we gotten any results as a consequence of that?
Zach, for the record, we have started to get some preliminary results from that. We will get new information, I believe it is June 8th, we'll have a meeting with KXLY who we're advertising with. So the initial round of emails that were going out to potential recruits, people who fit a profile, those were going out at the very end of April. One of the measurements that we are tracking for that is sheriff's office page hits. And so we had an average of about 600 hits per week on a pretty, per month on a consistent basis. Even with a week and a half, about 10 days of advertising, at the end of April, we saw that jump up to about 1,000 hits on the page. That doesn't necessarily translate into applicants, but we know that people are arriving at that page and proceeding into the careers portal there. We'll get more information about specifically what that translates to when we do that for an entire month. At the beginning of May, we had advertisements that are starting on YouTube and Hulu. So that is another place that we're getting out in front of potentially interested applicants.
And on your analytics, are you showing where these people are coming from?
Yes, we'll have more information about that. We did get to select certain markets to target and we looked at previous records of where we successful in recruiting people from so that we can continue to fish in the pond where the fish are at, so to speak.
Are you seeing any increase or blips in applicants as a result of what you've done so far?
It's a little too early to be able to say for sure, given just that small period of time that this has been in operation. But we did see a couple more applicants than we had on average by trend. So for example, we were having about 15 and a half applicants on average per week for the four core positions that we were advertising for. So that's our various deputy positions, laterals, and then communications officers, emergency communications officers. That number did go from 15 and a half to 18. So we did see a little bit of a lift there, although I don't anticipate to see those lifts to really take place until we get further into this month.
May I ask Zach a question?
Of course.
Zach, have you had an opportunity to look at some of the threads on the social media of those advertisements?
So, I have not.
Never mind.
I was going to say, I like to fish. I love to fish. Set a nice flat lake. Reel my bait down. Wait a minute, then reel it down further. Find out when I start getting a nibble. And then I reel it down a little further and find out when I'm getting some substantial bites. Now, I can't control that. That's just where it is. And I can say all day long, I'm fishing in the top six feet to save money, but I go home with an empty Creole. Whereas when I go down to where I need to be, I just need to know, be mindful of that.
Takes more line to get down deeper.
It does. It takes more line and more, bigger bait sometimes.
Yep, I agree with you. We are investing a pretty substantial amount of our overall recruitment budget and that is proportionate to the amount of openings that we have in the sheriff's office relative to other departments within the overall organization of Cootenay County. The, one of the things that we are doing with this approach with KXLY, they have very sophisticated ability to re-target applicants and potential applicants as we work them through essentially a sales funnel on the position. So to your point, the analogy may be, we found that we have some success here, we're going to probe down a little bit lower to see if we have greater success in certain other markets as well. And having A and B testing, so putting forward different ads to be able to see which one of these may be more effective and so that we can calibrate to have the greatest level of success.
Don't be afraid to move it around a little bit.
Of course.
Well, I would say I would be very careful about what you're doing, because what you're doing is what I do every day. And to get visits to a website without being able to meaningfully track your applications is, will not serve you well. One. Two, you have a 25 to one ratio right now, given the existing salaries that we offer. So you're going to need 25 applications to get one deputy. And if you're not seeing a meaningful bump in that, because I believe the expense was $4,000 a month.
Correct.
Yeah, so take however many of those applications that you're going to need to get a deputy and work that $4,000 into it, and that's how much it's going to cost you ad-wise to get one application that'll go all the way through.
To that point, I agree with you. My role as a recruiter is to get as many people to that point of application and examining whether or not they want to join the organization and presenting that in the most attractive manner possible. It is on the sheriff's office and the board to be able to determine what that nature of that position looks like. I will do everything I can to bring them to that point to be able to make that decision. And hopefully, we can all work together to make that decision, an easy one for them to want to join the organization. So in partnership, I think that we can drive additional traffic to these postings and see a greater return on investment when it comes to applicants. I would love to see that one in 25 number become a lot more on a cost basis effective by drawing more applicants in.
It's kind of low-tech, but are you going to be at the fair?
KCSO does attend at the fair, yes.
You will be recruiting?
Yes.
Good.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
No. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we can go on. We're going to handle items three and four in the same executive session. So if there is, it's under the same code number, if there's a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061B.
I second the motion.
We exit executive session 1B, item three, list staff to proceed as discussed. Item four, to approve the agreement in admin pay.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. We've had public comment, and this meeting is adjourned at 11:00 a.m.
Bingo.
Hey, thank you. I hate to cut people out, but this is just planned.